Well, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item up is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. We did have a sign-up sheet outside, but I see nobody signed up currently. That does not preclude anybody that would like to speak this evening to come forward to the podium. So, don't everybody rush at once, but I see nobody getting out of their seats. So, I assume we have nobody for public comment this evening, so we'll close out that section of the meeting then. Okay, next item up is the consent agenda. All items listed in this heading are considered to be routine by the city council, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Considering we only have one item, that's the minutes, does anybody have anything that they need to say about that? Do I entertain a motion for that? I see none, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve Consent Agenda, item number one.
Okay, we have a motion right here, a second. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have first motion and a second. Thank you.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up is the mayor's report, and I have two proclamations this evening. I will read the first one here, and it goes like this. Whereas Bike Month was established as a national celebration in 1956 to showcase the many benefits of bicycling and encourage more people to try bicycling; and whereas bicycling offers an opportunity to invest in more equitable access to key resources for communities and households without a car; and whereas investing in a connected and protected bike lane and related facilities can be beneficial for local businesses; and whereas riding a bike makes streets safer, brings people together, and keeps the air clean; and whereas the city of Marion has accepted a bike and pedestrian improvement plan to incorporate more bike lanes or sharrows in future projects; and whereas May is also the time of year for people to celebrate Bike to Work Week from May 13th to May 19th, as well as Bike to Work Day on May 17th. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Marion, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as National Bike Month, proclaimed on the 22nd day of April, 2024. That's the first proclamation. I hope everybody has a bicycle out there and has been riding it. Okay, if not, you have till May, so, yeah, get it out and pump up the tires, so. Second proclamation. Whereas Public Service Recognition Week was first observed in 1985 and is celebrated the first week of May; and whereas Public Service Recognition Week honors all people who serve our nation as federal, state, county, local, and tribal government employees; and whereas public servants use this time to educate others about the work they do and why they chose public service careers to make life better for all; and whereas through this education, public servants connect with citizens, improve perceptions, and help inspire new generations to go into public service; and whereas I urge all citizens to learn about what government workers do positively affect our community, and I personally thank our local public servants for working diligently on our behalf. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Marion, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 5th through the 11th, 2024, as Public Service Recognition Week, proclaimed on the 22nd day of April, 2024, by me. All right, so let's give a round of applause to all those public servants out there. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for all you do. We appreciate it. Okay, looks like our next item up, moving right along, is the Planning Commission item. Oh, wait a minute, no, I do have some things. Excuse me, Mr. Dyer, I forgot all these things that the council has done. I almost passed by there. I was off my game today. I don't know, was all that picking up trash today, I guess, earlier. Okay, but no, I have some other things. I always like to take a few moments just to talk about what I and the other council members have done over the past two weeks, sometimes three, just to know that we're out there doing other things besides just coming to this meeting. So, what I have here is I and councilmember Hands, Chaveta, Silver, and Silvers, and several staff members attended the State of the County address by Johnson County Commissioner Chairman Mike Kelly. I'm happy to report that Johnson County is the greatest county in the state of Kansas, and that a lot of good things are occurring. One of the big things is the county is addressing the homeless issue. That is something affecting all cities. We got to mingle and speak with other commissioners, mayors, and councilmembers from other cities. As you're aware, Seven Days of Kindness has been occurring over the last week. Another way of focus this last week on kindness, let's continue to carry this effort throughout the rest of the year. Councilmember Silvers and Chaveta attended the Public Arts Committee meeting. Thank you for representing the council on this important committee. I and councilmember Hands and Caldwell and several staff attended the Northeast Chamber of Commerce Ribbon Cutting Ceremony for Polestar Plumbing, Heating, and Cooling. They've actually been in business for 41 years, and they've been in Marion for the last five. It's a family-run business, but in three locations with over 75 employees, and congratulations to them. Councilmember Hands and I met Mr. Engel, developed the agenda for tonight. Councilmember Hands and I attended the Flags for Freedom Committee meeting. We will be having an event this year on the 4th of July with band and food, trucks. I hope all can attend. A recommendation on what flags should be allowed to be flown on the flag while coming before the council in a future meeting. I and councilmembers Caldwell, Hands attended the Volunteer Appreciation Dinner. Members from our boards, committees, and volunteers that work at many of our city-sponsored events were honored that evening. These individuals give up their time and talent to serve our community. It is through the contribution that we are able to offer so many great events with the budget that we have. I also send thanks go to each and every one of you guys that also assist us out there as volunteers. Councilmember Hands, Chaveta, Leahy, and Yodrich attended the Parade of Hearts kickoff function. For those who have not seen, we have two parade of hearts, art pieces located in our city. One at the Visitors Bureau, one at Farmer's Market. Councilmember Chaveta and Hands attended the Deep Roots KC Garden Tour. Okay, our very own residents, Christopher Leach and Gary Becker, Jerry, excuse me, Jerry Becker, I started with a G. We're on, it is with a G, though, we're on that tour, so we were represented, our city was. Councilmember Ryder, Hands, and Yodrich attended the Employee Music Bingo Event. Okay, I and councilmember Hands, Ryder, Leahy, and several attended the Arbor Day Tree Planting at Marion Park Elementary School. Street Superintendent Fine and his staff did a great job of explaining the importance of trees, and they let the kids help fill up the hole with dirt. Our fire department, the crew watered it in, and I read a proclamation to the kids, and they provided us with a poem. I and our entire council, except Ms. Yodrich, who was unable to attend, were able to take a tour of our city to look at the upcoming capital improvement projects. As staff pointed out each of the projects, it helps to actually see these in person to fully understand the magnitude of the projects. BHC was on board as well to show us some of their equipment that they use to lay out these projects. I and councilmember Hands, Chaveta, and several staff attended the Arbor Day, Earth Day Tree Planting at Crestview Elementary. Superintendent Randy Fine gave a history of the Arbor Day. I read a proclamation, the kids recited a poem, and they assisted in putting dirt in the hole. A great job by our public works crew and our fire department, who again watered in that tree. Earth Day started on April 22nd, 1970, and was conceived by Wisconsin Senator Gaylord Nelson. This preceded the founding of the Environmental Protection Agency, which started on December 2nd, 1970. So, let's all work together in protecting our earth for the future generations. Speaking of taking care of our planet, I and councilmembers Hands and Caldwell and several staff, and community volunteers, I might add, spent about 90 minutes cleaning up the litter along our streamway park. A big thank you to all those who helped in that project as well. Now with that, Mr. Dyer, I think I have concluded my mayor's report.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. First item this evening from your Planning Commission is... My Planning Commission is an application for a request to approve a rezoning to Planning and Development General and a preliminary development plan for 6805 Farley Avenue. The applicant is Mr. Dirk Van Kelpel, a well-known artist within this area. He's provided a number of art pieces throughout the KC metro and beyond. And the purpose of this quest is for the construction of a new art studio and residence for him. So, on the map here, this is Farley. 67th Street is right here. Piece of property you're talking about is right here, outlined in red. To the east of it, you may recall, a couple months ago, the city approved a conditional use permit for Mr. Richard Webb for the expansion of parking area bound there for the purposes of storing operable vehicles, so that is in this location here. To the south is undeveloped. This is property that will ultimately become, most likely, Johnson County wastewater. On the other side of Farley, so to the west, a single-family development. And then to the north, this is Mr. Van Kelpel's current residence and art studio. And then a little bit further to the north is an industrial building with warehouses and a variety of uses in there as well. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the purpose of this request is to construct an 11,000-square-foot residence and work studio for Mr. Van Kelpel. Up here on the screen is the site plan for that facility. So, Farley Avenue is here to the left or to the west. On the, to the east, this is the area that will be Mr. Webb's future parking lot for the storage of operable vehicles. And this is the building he is wishing to construct. It'll be a two-story building, so the main level will face out onto Farley Avenue. It'll be served on Farley Avenue by a one-way horseshoe drive. This area will also provide parking for handicap accessible parking. I think it's important to note that there is a note on the face of the plan saying that there will be no delivery or pickup of materials or supplies from Farley Avenue. All of that will occur on the east side of the property through Mr. Webb's property. The property owner, Mr. Van Kelpel, and Mr. Webb have entered into an agreement for access, to provide access to this property. Mr. Van Kelpel's residence will be in the northern portion of the building, on the upper area. To the southern portion will be a studio showroom area, and then the lower portion will be his workshop. This is a rendering of what the building will look like. On the backside, this is the side that's to the east, this is the side that faces Mr. Webb's property. It will, you can see a couple of garage doors. This first garage door, this is a dock high door, or, so essentially, a truck can back up to it, be as high. The door is at the same level as the truck. This will be the door primarily used for delivery of materials and picking up of art pieces. As you go to the northern portion of the building, this here is another garage door. This will be for the residential parking. The residential area is immediately above that area of the parking garage. As you can see also, there will be a deck on the backside, on the east side of the building. And the east side will be primarily, on this side, will be clad with horizontal siding, and then also have a standing seam metal roof. So, going to the east elevation, so this is, excuse me, the west elevation, this is the elevation that faces Farley. Again, you see an overhead garage door. The applicant stated that primarily be used for the purposes of moving large art pieces. If you're familiar with Mr. Van Kelpel's work, he does some very large pieces. So, that'll be primarily to move that in and out of the showroom area that is in there as well. And then you can see as you go a little bit further to the north until that, this will be the residential area. And again, you can see the deck here. Again, primarily standing seam metal, standing seam metal roof, horizontal sliding. And then you can also see, is the applicant is going to put a stone veneer on the front of the building that will wrap on around to the north side of the building, stone veneers from rocks that he has found on site, and he will cut for, and apply to the facility. Again, this is a rezoning request, and as part of that, you all have the golden factors to consider. This is contained within your staff report. At April 3rd Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission had a public hearing for this item, and after holding the public hearing and getting no comments, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning, as well as the preliminary development plan, with the conditions that are in the staff report. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here as well.
Any questions for Director Dyer?
I have.
Sorry, we have one, Ms. Hands, go ahead.
I have a comment.
A comment.
I'm so excited to see this. Been a long time coming. I do have a question about the, if it's on the flat, that's quite an incline to the east? The trucks coming in from that side?
So, again, they're using, they're using the elevation here. So, actually, it'll be, there will be a grade that have to come up, but again, they're not going all the way up to the level of Farley. It's essentially a split-level walkout. Think of it as a split-level walkout. So, this area up here, this is more the area that is the height of Farley. And then this area down here, again, you can see the drive starting to come up the slope right here to get to this driveway, but this, again, to have a dock high door, essentially, a door that's going to be about four feet off of grade, so this, again, is not...
Okay, there is one rendering in our packet that, that sort of gets to what you're talking about with the difference in the elevation. So, I just wanted to bring that up so that I could understand it better. Thank you.
They're going, the architects worked with, the architect and the applicant worked with the grades to try to make it work for his purposes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question too, because I wasn't sure exactly where the location of the property, this was going to be. Is the existing structure going to continue to stay there? Is this to the south of that?
So, here is, this is the existing structure right here. So, this will be to the south of it. So, the existing structure, his existing residence will remain.
Remain, thank you.
And then are the cutouts that, when we redid Farley, are those the cutouts that are going to be used?
I do not believe so. I don't think they've completely cited, but I do not believe so.
I think they might be too far north.
I think they do have to move them. And that will be the responsibility of the property, of the developer property, yep.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Director Dyer? Does anybody have a desire to hear from the applicant? See none there? Well, then, I would entertain a motion if there's an interest here in moving forward here.
I'm happy to make this.
There you go, Ms. Hands, go ahead.
I move that the governing body concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve with conditions the request for rezoning of 6805 Farley Avenue from PUDG, which is Planned Unit Development General, that district to, and I won Light Industrial District to a PUDG with use restrictions and the associated preliminary development plan for an artist's studio with classroom instruction and a single residential dwelling unit.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Or here, okay, Mr. Caldwell.
I'll second that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We expect great things to come out of that studio, Mr. Kepel. Okay, go. Oh, yeah, come on forward. Give your name and address for the record, sir.
Hi, I'm Dirk Van Kepel at 6801 Farley, and I've lived here since 1988, and I have loved Marion all this time. It's really nurtured what I do. I moved there originally so I could get to the highway quickly, but it turns out to be just the greatest place to have an artist's studio. I just wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome. Well, hope you're going to be here many more years.
I hope so, too.
Okay. Director Dyer, go ahead.
This next item is a preliminary development plan for Ascentist. And I will refrain from trying not to call it Adventist, but, because they are two different things. So, Ascentist Mar, excuse me, Assistant, Ascentist Medical Office Building that is located at 6815 East Frontage Road. The purpose of this request is for the expansion of their existing parking lot to add approximately, or not approximately, add 24 parking stalls. The location of the property you see up on the map is outlined in blue here. This is the building right here. So, the north of it is Carmax. To the east of it is Pepper Tree. To the south is a single-family residential subdivision. And then to the west is I-35, and further to the west is a number of automobile dealerships. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the purpose of this request is to add additional parking spaces. So, currently, the current parking lot ends right here. And so, the gray area is the area that they wish to add parking to. The purpose of some of the parking, they have stated that they don't intend to add any additional customers or doctors. They simply need more space over there to make folks more comfortable as they maneuver in and out of the parking lot. So, that's the primary purpose of this request. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting prior to the Planning Commission meeting, and they received, had a number of folks there, they had a good attendance. The minutes, or I guess better the description, the summary of that minutes attached to your staff report. One of the things that they heard, they being the applicant, heard at that meeting was a desire for the residents to have a six-foot privacy fence along the backside. So, for the expansion area only, the applicant is going to be put, erected a six-foot privacy fence on the backside here. They will have additional landscaping along the privacy fence. They also have landscaping along, this is Carmax Drive, along the north side. One of the conditions of approval, recommended conditions of approval is that they expand that landscaping to have additional low-level grasses and bushes to match what is on the other part of the Ascentist property. So, and there was comment at the Planning Commission, as you saw in the minutes. It's kind of similar to what the applicant received at the neighborhood meeting. Again, feel that the fence is something that the neighbors wanted, so that is one of the reasons why staff is supporting the erection of the fence. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing, and then after receiving comments and closing that public hearing, they unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary development plan. So, with that, the applicant is here, but I also, to answer any questions, but I would be also, be glad to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have.
Any questions for Director Dyer?
Could you just speak to the stormwater issue? Because that was a big topic when they did the other building.
So, there is an existing stormwater detention basin that is located right here. So, the applicant did provide a stormwater analysis stating that the detention basin will handle the additional runoff that will be created by this expanded parking lot. So, they did provide to us a memo that's signed and sealed by a licensed engineer to that fact. So, we're, so the stormwater has been looked at and will be managed per city ordinances.
There was also a comment about that the parking lot would actually be at a lower level? This part in some, no?
No, the parking lot actually will, they're regrading the parking lot so much of it doesn't slope down to the, to the south.
Right.
So, there'll be a flat area that will collect more of the water and put it into the storm system. Instead of having the big slope, there still will be a pretty big slope to the south, but it'll be, there'll be less of it. So, they'll be flattened off, and they'll be able to handle, manage more of the stormwater.
Okay, that made me feel better.
Ms. Chaveta, did you have something to?
Yeah, I just had, I drove by there today, actually. So, where they're expanding the parking, and there's some fairly, not huge trees, but more mature trees, and those will be all removed, and then they're only going to replace them with some smaller ones that will take a while to grow up. That's disappointing, I guess, is my only comment, really, just that they're removing quite a few trees to make that happen. I would hope that they planted more trees than what's shown in the landscape plan. It's not a huge deal.
Any other questions for Director Dyer? I see no other questions. Is there any desire to have the applicant come forward? I don't, I think we're ready for a vote then. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Move that the council concur with the recommendation, the Planning Commission, to approve with conditions preliminary development plan for the Ascendant parking lot expansion in the Planned Unit Development General District location at 6815 East Frontage Road, and authorize the mayor to sign the affecting ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, Ms. Hands.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Just like we have Ms. Gard coming forward for the next item.
Good evening, Caitlin Gard, Assistant City Administrator. Tonight, you're being asked to consider amendments to Council Policy 1.2, Budget Amendments. The policy is included in your packet, the changes are included. I'd be happy to answer any questions. What the changes that we're recommending include are adjustment of the authorities of department heads and the city administrator for already budgeted expenses, and does not increase the authority of any personnel that already exists within the policy. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Gard?
I just want to restate what you said, so it doesn't increase anybody's dollar limits.
Correct, no purchasing authority dollar increases.
Right.
Holding the line. Any other questions, go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
I had a question about reimbursement on days of travel.
That's the next agenda item.
And so, I'll hold that question until the next item.
Okay, if I see no further questions, I would entertain a motion on that. Ms. Hands, oh, Mr. Silvers, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve amendments to the City Council Policy 1.2 as approved, as proposed.
Okay, I have a motion, we have a second, Ms. Chaveta.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, Ms. Gard.
Excellent. Next item is consider a resolution amending the employee handbook. Annually, staff reviews, actually, more than annually, staff reviews the handbook for updates, making sure that we're in compliance with our practices and our neighboring cities and just how we operate. This year, staff is recommending adjustments to four of the policies in addition to a new employee handbook policy regarding language stipend. Again, all of the proposed policies and changes are included in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Mr. Silvers, I think you had something for this thing.
I think I do, yes. Just a question real quick on the reimbursement while traveling, because as someone that used to travel a lot, sometimes you would travel a full day, but then still have a meeting or something job-related in the evening, and it sounded like the amendment to this would disallow reimbursement for that meal? Or, or if it was over dinner?
Actually, it would go the other way.
It goes the other way?
Yeah, a travel day is now included. Most likely, you're going to be traveling most of the day, and so including all of that within, that would make a lot of sense.
Okay, so I flipped it in my head when I was reading it, so thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions for Ms. Gard?
I want to say I particularly like the language stipend, the second language. That's really good to encourage that. Thank you.
Bueno.
Very good.
Yes, yes. Okay, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution amending the employee handbook policies 5.09, 7.02, 7.04, 8.01, and add a new policy 6.05 to the employee handbook.
Okay, we have a motion, now here a second. Go ahead. I just want to call you Amy. Ms. Ryder.
Mr. Mayor, I second.
We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember... Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, it looks like next up is approval of an ordinance for new franchise agreement. Who handles that?
I can do that.
Okay.
If you want.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item and the next item are related. Both are ordinances for telecommunication franchises. The city currently has ordinances with Telco, Expedia, and Quest Communications. Um, all three companies have been acquired by Lumen Technologies. Lumen Technologies is requesting two separate franchise agreements, as they have merged Telco and Expedia into Level Three Telecom of Kansas City, and Quest Communications is now operating, operating as Century Link Communications. Both companies are subsidiaries of Lumen Technologies. Uh, Century Link will provide an annual compensation in the amount of two thousand four hundred five dollars and eighty-four cents, and Level Three Telecom of Kansas City will pay ninety-four dollars and eighteen cents for use of the city's right-of-way. These dollars were established as the proportionate amount that each entity had been paying under their, um, previous franchise agreements averaged over the past few years. The, um, negotiated fees and the, both ordinances were, um, negotiated and drafted by the city attorney, and this is a first reading, so there's no action required tonight. The initial terms of each ordinance are two years, with each having, um, auto-renew options for eight additional two-year terms. Uh, they're basically exactly the same, except for the dollar amounts that would, they would be providing to us. Um, if you have any technical questions, I would probably defer to the city attorney, as he's a little more versed in this than I am.
Does anyone have any, any questions for their, our city attorney, or for our clerk? Okay, I, I see no questions at this point. Looks like you're both all clear. Um, and we're not voting on that this evening, because it's just a first reading, so, um, okay, is that, and you took care of both of those with that, when, our discussion just now?
Yes, I covered them both.
Covered them both. So it looks like our next item up then will be, uh, consider a approval of an ordinance amending, uh, well, short-term rental agreements. Got Dr. Dyer coming forward.
Evening again, Mayor, council members. Uh, this evening, you, before you have a first reading of a ordinance that amends our sections regards to lic- licensing, um, for the purposes of administering short-term rentals, or STRs. Currently, the city of Marion requires owners, operators of STRs, whole-home STRs, i.e., uh, short-term rental in which the owner occupant is not present during the rental, to get a Marion occupational landlord license, and also to abide by the city of Marion's residential, uh, leasing requirements. Primarily, one of the big ones is that, is they have to have a biannual, or every two years, we do a complete interior inspection of that, uh, unit. In response to residents' concerns about the effects that short-term rentals have on their neighborhoods, the city council has discussed this item a number of times. The most recent one was on April eighth, at which time staff prevented, presented some different items that could be included in a draft ordinance. The draft ordinance before you receive is based upon the feedback that staff received from that April eighth meeting. Uh, some of the items that are in, within that draft ordinance are the first, um, I'll run through them quickly. Um, requires that, uh, short-term rentals have both a Marion, Marion landlord occupational license and an STR license, so they will need to have two licenses. Sets existing, uh, STR buffer zone at a thousand feet. So what is that? So that means that, um, for an STR, an existing STR, they have a buffer zone of a thousand feet around that parcel. No other residential, um, property within that buffer zone could get an STR license, uh, until obviously the existing STR is gone. So that's what the buffer zone is, and, um, the ordinance, draft ordinance sets it a thousand feet. Set, uh, sets October first of this year as the date to establish existing STRs. Requires STRs owners and managers to notify property owners and occupants within two hundred feet of the STR, of the existence of the STR, and also to provide, um, those peop- those, uh, neighbors with contact information for the STR. And also requires STR owners, managers to provide and pro- post, uh, neighborly, neighborly information, information in regards to, hey, you're in the neighborhood, act accordingly. Um, some visitor bureau information of local Marion, uh, things to see and do, and other items like that, that will be provided to the STR, uh, owner ma- owner occu- excuse me, owner manager at the time of licensing. So that, staff, would be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Leahy.
Um, I know it was floated in our workshop about, um, mandating that there be a manager that lived within a certain distance. Did we not, did we not take that up?
Within like fifty miles, I think some of the others did, or we didn't do that.
But we, we didn't include that in ours.
We didn't. Mr. Leahy.
Yes, is, uh, license for the owner or for the building, for that property?
It is for both.
What happens when property changes hands?
That's a great question. So, uh, this is with all our, um, with all, with our mo- our other licenses is together. So it is for the owner and the property. So if either one of those separate, that license no longer, uh, is no longer vo- is, excuse me, is void. So it would have to, so i.e., in your question, if a property owner has, whether it be an STR or just a regular, um, rental, and they, um, sell that to somebody else who wants to have, make it a rental, that new owner has to get a new license for it. The license does not go with the property.
And so in those situations where we have two of them that are currently within the thousand feet, if they, one of those gets sold, it will, they won't be able to renew.
That is correct, until that, the buffer zone that is causing them not to be able to renew is gone, but that is excellent, that is absolutely correct. So, yes, so if there's two of them together, so come October first, we've established all the existing STRs, two of them set right next to each other. If one of them is sold, it no longer can be an STR.
Right. So then, we'll have these areas, the, the thousand-foot zones, that you can't have one in. There be any type of people waiting in line to get into that area? Is it just going to be first come, first served if one of those gets sold and that area becomes freed up?
Yeah, that is exactly right, yes. Yep. We, we will not, we will not be maintaining a waiting list.
Thank you.
Let me, let me, let me make sure that I be clarify that. We will not be maintaining a waiting list.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Dyer, is it also correct that also if just the license laps, we don't have to sell the property, but if I decide not to get my license, or it laps, and, and you're within the buffer, you, you, you can't renew?
Yes, that is correct as well.
Thank you.
Good, Ms. Ryder.
How often will this be updated? So if somebody wanted to have an STR and they're waiting, and their neighbor has one down the block or whatever, when will they know that it's available?
They, we will not be providing them with, calling them up, saying it's available. We will not be doing a waiting list. We will try to maintain, um, obviously, if somebody called us up and asked, we would be able to immediately look up, say, the license lapsed. Um, but we will also, I should say, we, I will try very hard to keep up current GIS and current mapping, so that that information is readily out there. But yes, um, depending on the frequency in which they turn over. Um, if it, if it looks like it's being fairly stable and something that, um, if I have knowledge that one has happened, uh, whether it be a new one or one's gone away, we'll try to update the map. Uh, we will, again, as we work our way through this and see the level of workload, um, if it's a whole bunch all the time, we probably will be doing it more on, on a more scheduled basis, like you say, monthly. But we'll just, again, depending on the workload. But let me finish that to say, any to, anybody can call at any point in time, and we can immediately look in the database and see, oh, yes, there, it's gone, or it is, so.
Any other questions, Dr. Dyer? Go ahead, Ms. Leahy.
I've been pretty vocal oppo- opposed to the thousand-foot buffer, because I think it's an unfair limit on people. And from what I heard from our workshop was that people wanted to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods. Does the council have an interest in just banning short-term rentals in R-one residential
I do not, and that's based on, um, personal experience, that there is a need to have that kind of housing option if you, my, my family had people who had to find some place to live with two dogs, and, um, because their house was mold infested, and it took them nine months before they could get back in their house. So they had to do several different moves. I think that level needs to be there.
Anybody else? A comment on that? Now, oh, go ahead, Ms. Ryder.
I also am not okay with banning it entirely, just because I'm kinda not okay with flat banning stuff in general, but, um, also, I would be a hypocrite, because I've myself used short-term rentals before, and then to say, I don't want them here, I feel like I would be a hypocrite.
Yeah, thank you. Now, I, I know there's a, if, this is a first reading, so we're not going to be voting on anything this evening.
Correct.
But if anybody has on the council, wants to see something tweaked to what you've presented so far, how does that, how do they do that, and how do we go forward with that?
We would prefer that conversation now.
Right now, okay.
Just a little bit more about that. The next reading is May thirteenth, is this the scheduled next reading, May thirteenth? And then it also, at that point in time, assuming this continues forward, uh, we will be bringing forth an amendment to your fee schedule to include the fee of three hundred dollars for an STR license. So that's the, that's the schedule, but if there's a desire for any tweaks, now is the time.
Okay, do I see, okay, go ahead.
To reply to Jacob, I would consider it. I think we have places that are being run like hotels, and that's not appropriate in a residential community.
I think there, there are two, R-three, and R-four areas where they could go into multifamily housing that wouldn't be single-family, R-one housing. I, I would rather just ban them in R-one housing altogether than to try and put a thousand-foot radius, trying to maintain it, and all the, all the hoops, and if we're really trying to protect the integrity of our single-family housing neighborhoods, which is what we heard at our workshop, that's what people wanted to do, was to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods. I think banning them altogether in those, in that R-one zoning would be the way to do that. Uh, that's my thought.
I assume, okay, go ahead, Ms. Vetta.
Oh, I just, um, I don't think it's just protecting the, the neighborhood like of the R-ones, it's, it's like housing stock too, right? It's, you know, like allowing that, it's not just preserving. Um, speaking as the neighborhood that has the most, and the city, it's, you know, it's my neigh- my neighbors who have been, you know, bringing it to me. I don't know if I, again, I feel like a hypocrite saying that we're banning them completely, because I've used them, my family uses them in our neighborhood when they come to stay and visit, because our house isn't big enough to host people, so, um, I don't know how I feel about that, just personally.
Would it be appropriate, Mr. Dink, just to have a raise, a show of hands of how many people would like to ban it, to determine whether we need to go forward or not with this?
Before we go forward, I do, sorry, I do want to add one thing. Um, please recognize that your R-two and R-three zoning is still mostly single-family residences. So, so, um, so, so it is, while we think R-two may be more dense, a majority of the, the residences, they're a single family. I just want to make sure to be clear on that.
We, we could find the right balance of zoned residential that captures most of the single family. Maybe it's in R-one and R-two, it's banned, and it's available in R-three and four.
Probably, if there was a desire to go that direction, probably more just to single-family homes, single-family units.
Yeah, we just ban single-family home.
Right. So, anyway, I apologize for interrupting, I just want to make sure we're clearly clear that.
Yeah, we.
A lot of single fam- we have a still, we have R-two zoning that still has majority of single-family.
We could find the right balance to word it, to do, to achieve that goal.
So, to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, I, I, my preference would be to just go through and build consensus rather than, uh, a methodical polling, because a methodical polling could, um, could create some legal issues, so you can, yeah, head nods, consensus.
Head nods is okay. So, I guess, I, I will say, how many would like to proceed forward with a short-term rental policy, uh, a head nod of that? If you would like to still go forward with, as we're moving, I see two there. Okay, I see three, four, right. It looks like we need to continue forward, is my understanding, from what I'm recognizing, that we want, we want.
I think you asked, because I have a question.
Oh, well, did, did anybody understand what I was, what I was, the question was? Maybe, maybe I was not correct.
So from staff's perspective, it seems like there has been perhaps, I've seen two, um, comments in regards to restricting single, going, moving even more stringent than your current STR regulations that are before you, the proposed ones, to banning STRs from all single-family homes. Is that a fair, fair summary? Um, uh, we got, I have seen two comments that would seem to support that, and then three comments that would seem to be not supporting that. And staff, so obviously, our desire is to bring to you at your next meeting, um, what is going to be a viable ordinance? So I think, is that what we were trying to get to?
Well, I mean, I think the thousand feet is a, a compromise, and as all compromises go, you have both sides that don't like it, so it's where it is. So if that's what we do, we do. If I had my preference, we wouldn't have it. I always get my preference.
Okay. So if, if I'm reading the room right, are we at, that we move forward, uh, as you've presented this evening, and with a ordinance that we'll come back and vote on, and we either vote it up or vote it down next meeting? Is that correct?
And we have no tweaks to the cur- to the resolution ahead of us, in front of us tonight. I have no tweaks personally.
I think, I think that's where we're at. Okay, I think I'm getting, head nods, I, I think you have a direction, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Oh, I, well, did anybody want to come forward on that for short-term rentals that, to speak? Was it? I'm sorry, uh, the council president just asked me. Yeah, Mr. Crone. Yeah, they did sign up, but if, if you would like to speak to the short-term rental issue, I, I would entertain somebody coming forward at this time. Give your name and address, serve for the record.
Billy Crone, six-six-three-three Wed Street. I mean, I, there's so much disagreement over what to restrict and how. Um, I think it's okay to not act, especially when there's not, I mean, we, we use the word consensus, but there's clearly not. Um, there's all sorts of different needs and wants, so maybe just not act. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Crone. Okay, I see no one else coming forward, just please, officer. So we got Director Campke coming to, and maybe Mr. Engelboe, is this?
I was just going to do an introduction while she's bringing up her, um, um, her PowerPoint. Uh, this is our first budget discussion of our fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Um, I say this every year, but I think, uh, it's worth saying again every year, uh, our budget is the most important document that we do. It's a value statement of what we value as a community. Uh, it's very, very important that we're thoughtful about the things that we put in it. I think that it's fantastic that one of the first things that we do, and we might be the only city that I'm aware of that does this, that we actually do the CIP first. That's a big value statement in and of itself, that we value our infrastructure and understand the key fundamental role that we have, which is to take care of our infrastructure, maintain our city. So the fact that we do that first, as opposed to an afterthought, how much money's left, let's throw it to the streets, we actually talk about what are the things we need, and then we figure out how do we fit those into all of the values that we have, uh, across all of the needs and wants that our residents have and our council members have, and our staff has. So again, um, I thank you for your efforts to be there on Friday, uh, for our tour. Uh, I want to thank specifically our department heads for putting in, um, very thoughtful, judicious budgets, uh, and I want to thank Donna for making it all work, wherever Donna is right here, because, uh, without her, we can't make any of it work, because we don't know exactly what's going on without her. Uh, and Celia and her staff for, uh, putting together a very thoughtful CIP program. So, uh, that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Celia.
Okay, um, welcome to our CIP presentation for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine. Since, um, you did see this presentation last Friday, I'm going to move quickly, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Um, we're dividing the nine projects up into major, medium, and minor. Here's our major projects, which are over five million dollars. minor. Here's our major projects, which are over $5 million. I have a couple slides on Upper Turkey Creek and Underground Utilities, so I'm going to focus on Merriam Drive, Johnson Drive to 55th. This was our 2023 Cars project. It was moved due to the Upper Turkey Creek project. We're estimating 2029, but it could be pushed out based on the results of Turkey Creek. Turkey Creek, we're lucky to have a lot of external funding. You can see that our share is $9.6 million. Right now, the core is working on modeling. They're not going to get results back till August. So we'll have to wait and see how, how the end result is. Underground Utilities is underway. We did get final plans and Evergi is just trying to determine their final decision on easements. So as soon as that happens, we'll get moving. As you see, we did, we're going to delay the Antioch Road portion north of Shawnee Mission Parkway until the library redevelops. Here's our medium projects. I have a number of slides, but I'm just going to quickly talk about some of the Cars projects. As any Cars projects, and you see all the Cars projects listed, really includes streets, stormwater, streetlights, sidewalks, curb and gutter. So that's our standard for any Cars project. Some projects have, for example, Carter Avenue does not have a sidewalk on the east side, so that will be included. When we get to Merriam Drive, 55th to 50th, there'll be a shared use path. So I'm going to move quickly through these, but feel free to ask any questions you have. So this used to be our 2025 project, and it's a combination project of lining stormwater pipes or replacing them as well as mill and overlay. 49th Street is our 2025 Cars project. The standard components of a Cars project, but we are going to be adding a new sidewalk on the south side, working on the pull-in parking by the Orthodox Church so that we can put in a sidewalk south of their pull-in parking off of 49th. This project, I'm going to be bringing the bid award to you after this presentation for this project. This is lining and replacing pipe on, from 50th Terrace all the way to 47th Terrace in between backyards. We also are going to be regrading the small detention basin and replacing the outlet pipe behind a residence home, and we'll be using ARPA and SMAC funds for this project. This is our West Vernon project. This is a combination project too, where we're going to be street components and stormwater, including a water quality BMP. We'll be engaging the neighborhood to decide whether to, they want sidewalks or not. I think some do and some don't. So we'll wait till we get to that process and determine the consensus of the neighborhood and then move forward. And that is a quick summary of our medium projects. Unless anyone has questions, I'm going to move on to our minor projects.
Any questions this time? Okay, moving on.
Okay. Again, I have a lot of slides, so just going to pull out the ones that I don't have slides for. Our Park and Rec Master Plan, we'll begin the master plan process in 2025, and we'll use that to drive our CIP for our parks for future improvements, trails, parks, et cetera. Public transit improvements includes cost to upgrade our bus shelters or bus stops. So it may include a bench. We're waiting on the county to do a master plan. So this may be delayed while we determine which bus stops they decide to keep. 71st Street Reconstruction is a narrow, unimproved road that we will be replacing with full-depth asphalt, curb and gutter, stormwater, streetlights, and trail improvements. So our 75th Bridge Repair, I'm going to bring that to you after this presentation as well. It's administered by Overland Park. Because 75th Street is on the borders of both cities, then each of us share 50% maintenance costs. Originally, this was bid two times. First time, no bidder. The second time, one bidder that was well above the engineer's estimate. So Overland Park is recommending a delivery method of design build. And our share, they're estimating, would be about $1.1 million. Old Station 46 Apron, you can tell the drive approach is deteriorated. We've tried to repair it a number of times. This would include a full replacement. Merriam Connected Corridor, this is a Planning Sustainable Places grant that we worked with Overland Park. They were the lead, and they made recommendations for the entire Merriam corridor in Overland Park as well as Merriam. One of their recommendations was a roundabout at Antioch and Merriam Drive. There's a number of site constraints, so we're reevaluating that, looking at some preliminary engineering to see if that will work with the site constraints. We should know something in the next couple months. City Hall Interior Improvements, we completed Phase One, except for the sunshade that the engineer is working on, but had a number of exterior improvements. This would be the second phase of the improvements for first floor and mainly focusing on trying to make this more of a friendly, welcoming atmosphere. So when visitors, business owners come in and they need to talk to staff, we have wayfinding signs, as shown in the picture, that can direct you where to go. Also, a waiting area for staff and for court. And it gets really loud when courts, everybody's here for court. So having a waiting area and potentially putting in some carpet or other materials to make it quieter and some ADA modifications. This is a new project, Preliminary Engineering for I-35 and Shawnee Mission Parkway Interchange and Corridor. Currently, that's within, that's maintained by KDOT. What we found is that they have so many priorities. If we want them to, you know, make improvements, they're going to look at, well, what other, what other improvements do I need elsewhere? Are cities willing to chip in? So if we do, if we perform the preliminary engineering using partial I-35 TIF funds, that will allow the city to apply for federal funding for future improvements in the, in, in the, in the future. So that would include traffic modeling, looking at interchange concepts, and pedestrian connectivity across I-35 as well as along the entire corridor. This is a new project. Last fall, we had a big storm and the overhead electric on Knox, just north of our facility, public works facility, it fell to the ground and we weren't able to get out to perform emergency services. We did have two vehicles out already, so we were lucky. But this would allow us to bury the underground electric and make it more reliable for us to be able to come out and serve the public. Downtown Revitalization, this is an ongoing project that we use to improve the corridor in downtown area based on the plans listed in the slide. This slide shows our $24.6 million investment for downtown Merriam. I know that's a council goal, but it's also based on citizens and the number of plans we've done, that there's a big interest in, in investing in our downtown Merriam corridor. So here's all the projects that we plan to do over the, over the five and six-year period. Any questions on the minor projects?
Any questions, Director Kumpke? Seeing none.
Okay. Here's our annual programs that we have for maintenance. I won't go through every single one of these projects, but I have a couple slides on these, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. One thing I want to point out is our pedestrian and bicycle mobility program. In the past, we've used that to install bike sharos on the roads, but we're also going to focus on trails. We're developing a system to analyze the condition of the trails and make recommendations and improvements that's necessary. So our streetlight LED program, this is to convert high-pressure sodium bulbs to LEDs and also to replace the old Evergi Cobra Head poles with residential and decorative poles. Typically, we buy the materials through this program and then we use in-house labor. We, we used to be able to rent a directional bore rig, but now they're unavailable. We think since COVID, supply chain, as well as there's just a lot of federal funds out there and, and everybody's buying these, so we, we're unable to purchase them. So this cost has increased. So we'll be installing streetlights and we'll be hiring a subcontractor to bore. We also have the carbon reduction grant, which helps us pay for LED bulbs for our streetlights. Here's our mill and overlay program. Following our 50th Terrace and England project, in 2024, we will mill and overlay those streets. And then you can see what we're recommending for the next five years. 2027 mill and overlay funds are included in the West Vernon project, so that's why that's not listed there. Our traffic signal program, in the past, it's been about $50,000 a year. We upped it a little bit for the next two years. We have aging components, detection controllers, cabinets. We typically, for CIP projects, if there's a signal located in the project corridor, we'll, we'll upgrade it then. But this is, this program is to help us update some components that are aging, such as detection. One thing I mentioned before was the Johnson Drive and IKEA Way. That detection is starting to be obsolete, and we've had some complaints about that. So we can get that replaced so that we can have continuous traffic signal operation. And that's the end of my presentation before Donna presents financial information. Does anyone have any questions about the projects?
Any questions, Director Kumpke? It looks like we're good. I said, send Director Oliver up. Please, show me the money.
Good evening. Okay, whenever we're looking at the CIP, we see all of our expenditures, and then we have to look to, can we afford these? How much, how are we going to pay for them? And so one of the first things we do is we look at the general fund and how those revenues are coming in and how much then of the general fund revenue can we transfer over to fund the CIP? How much are the payments on the GO bonds? Do we need to provide a, any kind of subsidy for those bond payments? We look at the total cost of all of those projects, and then we look at what CIP funding is available. The CIP funding that we have, we transfer up to 50% of the 1% city sales tax, which is a little over $5 million a year usually. We, we have the quarter cent city sales tax that's for street and stormwater that can only be used for the CIP projects. We have always transferred 100% of the city share of the courthouse, the county's courthouse sales tax. Just as an FYI, that expires in March of 2027. It generates about $400,000 in revenue. So after that point, that's $400,000 less that we'll have going over into the CIP. And of course, we try, staff tries to get as many grants from the county, state, or other sources. And then we always look at whether or not it's in a TIF district, and if it is, we use the TIF funds. In, in the CIP document that was included with the packet, I put in there a CIP plan forecast. And this shows at the end of the plan, it's projecting a fund balance of about $14.3 million. A graphical depiction of that is here, and you'll see that over the course of the plan, it kind of curves down. This is pretty typical because we budget conservatively. And as a result, as the years get further away, we get more conservative. But we know that if in 2026, things are looking like they're going to go down, we can always back off or adjust that forecast or the projects that we're doing. As far as project expenditures go, you'll see the blue section at the bottom is those that are getting paid from the street and stormwater sales tax. You'll see the big blue in 2029, that's our Merriam Drive, Johnson to 55th Street project. You've got your general, maintenance, your restricted TIF. You see the big amount in 2024, that's our underground utilities. And then lastly, the light blue is the Upper Turkey Creek. And we can see that the majority of that project's going to take place in 2027. Also included in the packet is a nice summary of expenses and revenues by project where you can see each year exactly what's going to happen. I think it's a nice layout. Over the course of the five-year plan, 2025 through 2029, there are $56.4 million in projects. Lastly, I think this is exciting. As you may remember, we paid off our 2012 bonds last year, which did reduce our debt service. And with the sales tax revenues remaining strong right now, it looks like 97% of our debt service will be paid from that quarter cent of sales tax and really a very small amount paid from property tax. So that's good to see. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Director Oliver?
Okay.
I'm seeing none. Thank you.
I'll just add as a quick summary, the CIP, it's a five-year plan. We're really just approving the, what the 24 additions, 25 budget. We, as, as Donna said, we clearly can modify the out years as we go through them. So again, five-year plan, but where it's one-year budget.
Looks like next item up is Director Kumpke.
So I just talked to you very quickly about the 50th Terrace, England Street to Kessler Stormwater Drainage Project. Again, the scope is regrading the open channel basin behind a residential property and lining or, and/or replacing corrugated metal pipe. We did take the project out to bid, and on April 16th, we received three bids. Kansas Heavy Construction LLC was a low bidder in the amount of $1,218,360.50. We have used Kansas Heavy Construction in the past. They did our 55th Street project. They did a really good job, and we're real excited about getting going on this project. If you decide to approve this bid award tonight, construction is anticipated to begin in June and be completed by October. And again, the mill and overlay will follow that. We're also planning to have an open meeting, a public meeting for, for property owners, just to meet the contractor and ask, answer any questions they may have. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Director Kumpke? Okay, seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Silvers?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve a contract with Kansas City, I'm sorry, Kansas Heavy Construction LLC for the 50th Terrace, England Street to Kessler Street Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of $1,218,316.50.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second? Okay, Ms. Hands.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like you're up again, Director Kumpke.
Thank you. This is another project you just saw on our CIP. As I talked about, we have annual funding in order to replace our Cobra Head streetlights with LED residential streetlights. We use that funding. Typically, Public Works crews install, purchase the materials and then install those in-house. We also applied for CDBG funding in 2022 and 2023 for three streets, and we did receive over $121,000. So we, we originally planned, you know, for Public Works to install the conduit and purchase all the materials, but because of the lack of the bore rigs that I talked about before, unfortunately, we're unable to bore that on our own. So we went out for bid for this project for directional bore of approximately 6,200 feet of conduit on the three streets that we applied for, for CDBG funds. We opened two bids on April 15th, and Sheets Construction LLC was the low bidder in the amount of $263,400. And we would recommend moving forward with this project. And if you approve the bid, they would start in May and be done probably by July, June or July.
Okay. Any questions, Director Kumpke? Okay, I see no questions. I would entertain a motion. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a contract with Sheets.
Sheets.
Really? Construction LLC for the CDBG streetlight conduit project in the amount of $263,000, $263,400.
You have a motion? Go ahead, Ms. Chaveta.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
You have a motion, second, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like it's your night, Director Kumki.
So the Seventy-Fifth Street Bridge over Turkey Creek and the BNSF Railroad is shared, shared maintenance between Merriam and Overland Park as it's, the center line is the city boundaries. In, in 2022, the city of Overland Park performed a bridge inspection, and they identified deterioration of the reinforcing steel in Pier Two. And what they determined was that there's a expansion joint above that pier, and it failed over time, and chlorides and drainage from the deck drained down to the pier and started to deteriorate the reinforcing steel. So that needs to be repaired. We did have an interlocal agreement between Overland Park and Merriam that was approved in September 2022 for design. Total cost was $161,040. And then most recently, in May of 2023, we had another interlocal in the amount of $600,000 for bridge repairs. And Merriam's cost would be 50% of that. Overland Park did bid the project in late September 2023, and they didn't receive any bids. They thought it was probably due to late construction season bidding, and everybody was busy. So they went back and rebid it in February 2024, and they only received one bid, and it was four times the engineer's estimate. So what they would like to do after discussion with contractors and the design engineer, they'd like to go ahead and use a design-build-delivery method. So you get the contractor onboard. One of the concerns from the contractor that did bid it, they were concerned that it was, the shoring design was really close to the pier, and they couldn't get in there, and they would have to do a lot of handwork. So that was one of their concerns. So the hope is that if we get the contractor onboard, they'll be involved with the shoring, and they will be able to hopefully do some value engineering, too, to bring this cost down. I did mention earlier that one of their first ideas was, let's close the bridge for four months, and we can get this done, and it'll be cheaper. We're really concerned about that. So we told them, you know, you're going to have to show, make your case why this is really going to save a lot of money and time, and maybe we'll consider it, but we have a lot of partners in the area. Most importantly, the hospital, Shawnee, the apartment complex. So hopefully, that's not an option. Hopefully, they can find a better option so that we don't have to close the bridge and impact traffic. So this amendment number one includes those original design and construction costs, and it adds about $1.4 million to the amount for a total project cost of $2,161,040, of which Merriam's share would be $1,080,520. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Director Kumki? Go ahead, Ms. Chaveta.
I just have one question. I forgot to ask this on Friday. Are they going to repair the expansion joint that has also, that has failed at the same time? So this doesn't happen again?
Yes, yes, yes.
I assume so, but it just wasn't mentioned, so I just wanted to clarify. Great, thank you.
Good, go ahead, Ms. Ryder.
On the topic of the expansion joint, is there any way to do that, to put it in a location that's not over the pier? So that if it fails?
I don't think they can change that at this point after it's, you know, after it's already been designed and it's in place. But I think that they, you know, even with our bridges, that's something that you inspect the bridges every two years, and really, that's one of those key items that require replacement. So I think just a lot of preventative maintenance to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
Silver's, though, talk about moving that to inspection on a yearly basis instead of every two years of it? Or did it not get done every two years?
Well, I think it is an official every two years, and it's required by the state. But I think getting out there more often, just to keep an eye, you know, drive by, let's check it, because we don't want this to happen again.
Right. Good.
I have one more, sorry, I have one more question. We've talked about like different salt mixtures and things like that that we're using now, too. Could that potentially help not like extend the life of the expansion joint as well?
Yeah, and I'm not sure, honestly, what Overland Park, I know, I know that we've gone to some different beet juice, but that's something that we can definitely talk to them about.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully that would help, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But it's also the runoff, not just the chloroff.
Yeah, I know. I understand, yeah.
It's on our side.
I know, but I'm just saying, like, we've changed it, so.
Ms. Hands, go ahead.
So that bridge, when I drive over it, I feel like I'm going right over the rest of the Seventy-Fifth Street Bridge. Does KDOT have anything to do with Seventy-Fifth Street Bridge? Are we going into the bridge over I-35?
So any of the bridges have an agreement by KDOT that cities have certain requirements, like the, the substructure and the superstructure. So we would be required to do, we'd have to look at the agreement to say exactly, but they usually have, the cities have agreed to maintain a large portion of that.
Okay, so we're not going to run into, all of a sudden, KDOT's going to go. You have to do blah, blah, blah that?
No, because of this inspection. I mean, these are the things that we need to do. It's based on their criteria.
Any other questions? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Caldwell.
Any option to this?
No, there's, what, what option?
Doesn't seem like there's any options, but.
I mean, we could go back and talk to them, but really, they've tried to bid it twice, and they, they're hoping this design build brings the cost back down, because they don't want to pay four times the engineer's cost either. So there really aren't a lot of options, but hopefully, they can come to a good solution by doing this design build.
We want to know more about if they have to, if they do close it, how much that will save before we make any final decision.
Right. And we would come back to you for that final decision. So it's something that they brought up, and we told them, you need to look at the option to keep it open and an option to keep it closed. And, you know, if, we're going to have to look at the benefit to see if it's even worth keeping it closed for that.
Got you. Any other questions? I think we're winding down. I would entertain a motion.
I want to clarify, before I make the motion, it always throws me, after, even after all these years. We're making the motion in the total amount, even though we're only on the hook for half of it.
Yes, and the agreement spells out the total amount, and then it spells out our portion. So it's only half of that.
All right.
Okay, I'm ready now. Go ahead, Ms. Hands.
I'm ready. I move we approve and authorize the mayor to execute amendment number one to the May 1st, 2023, in a local agreement between the city of Overland Park and the city of Merriam for the Seventy-Fifth Street Bridge repairs in the amount of $2,161,040.
You have a motion, do I hear a second? Mr. Neal.
I'll second that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Director Kumki. Looks like next item up would be the monthly finance report. Director Oliver coming.
Your finance report was included in the packet. One thing that I just wanted to mention tonight was that this was the March report, which was for January sales tax. So you have one month of sales tax data in there. And if you look at it, you might feel like the sky is falling because sales tax revenues look like they're down quite a bit. But one thing that you have to take into account is that when the state cuts off and cuts off to issue our money, varies from month to month. And one month might have 28 days in it, one month might have 35 days. I mean, it kind of varies. And so month to month isn't totally an apple-to-apple comparison. So when I saw that, one of the first things I did is I went out, you can go on the state's website and see how everyone's sales tax collections were. And in Johnson County, almost the whole county was down, the, anywhere from 3% to 4% up to like 20%. And so I feel fairly confident that this is really more a result of just where they cut off the sales. And we'll be getting February sales tax data. We'll find out how much the distribution's going to be probably by Friday. And so at that point, we'll have a better feel for it. But right now, I feel confident that this isn't something to panic about. It's just where they cut off the sales.
Were you able to tell it really was a short month, that they did 20 days or something?
Yeah, I, I cannot state that emphatically, but, but I'm confident that's what it is with it having been across the board throughout the county, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Director Oliver?
Thank you.
My recommendation is go out and buy many cars. Okay. Community development update, Director Dyer's coming forward.
Not much to add from whatever I've talked about. See any other than to say, continue to look for applications for exterior and sustainability grants. So if anybody's interested in that, please contact David Easely. And then we're also working on getting the bid packet out for the driveway grant program. So we're hoping to get that out this week and hope to work through that and get something to you in the coming months for your approval. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Director Dyer? You've done a good job again. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next items up, informational items, planning commission draft minutes and the public art committee minutes. Unless somebody has any specific questions about governing those, we can ask those directors or people. Nope. Looks like that, that was good. We have no executive session this evening, do we? Mr. Sir. Well, I would ask you, Mr. Engle, is there anything else from staff that you'd like to present with us this evening?
Just once again, want to thank the council and staff for the effort put into the CIP tour. Thank the volunteers and staff for our trail cleanup. And I want to thank Director Slocum and her staff for hosting our volunteer appreciation dinner, which you mentioned before. But I did want to acknowledge that former councilmember Scott Diebold was, was voted, selected as our volunteer of the year. So he, he's given a lot back to, after being a councilmember, before and after being a councilmember, our flags for freedom and a variety of other causes. So again, thanks to the park and rec department and all of our volunteers. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Engle? I see no questions. Well, at this point, I guess I would entertain a motion. Nobody wants to leave?
I'd be happy to. But it's kind of, okay. I move, will you adjourn?
I have a motion, a general, I have a second. Ms. Ryder.
I second.
Madam Clerk.
All in favor.
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.